Okay, it's June 28th, 2021, 10 o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call. Smiley.
Here.
Hamlin.
Here.
McMurphy, here. Number four, approval of payroll warrants and claims.
I'm going to do so.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Number five, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, June 21st, 2021. Any additions or corrections you guys see?
I have none.
That looks good to me.
All in favor? Aye. Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the material request application for D3. Got it here.
So who's?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is for $20,000. Is this one spot? I think so.
Oh wait, there's two of them.
Is there another?
Yep, there are two. One, uh, there now. Two different sheets.
Okay, number seven, discussion of possible action regarding a near local jail agreement between the Winnebago Police Department and the County Sheriff to house inmates in Woods County Jail. And this is just a continuation of, I guess it all stayed the same.
I think it did.
As, I think it did last year.
So.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five.
One place or two.
I think it's just one.
Okay, number eight, discussion of possible action regarding Woods County Senior Citizens Billings. Monty, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioner McMurphy. We've got a little problem over there because we've got continuing leaks.
Right.
And what has happened, because that is a wooden structure and it is wooden being above, is causing deterioration in the structure of the building underneath the roof. These are pictures that you can pass around and see where we have issues with water coming through and getting into the substructure underneath the roof.
What kind of roofs are they? Tar. It's a flat roof. But it's a slope to the back.
It's a slight slope, but it's a pitch. And it's, it's that old tared roof.
Tarred roof.
It's old and you don't dare step on it because if you step on it, it breaks.
That's tar, chat, ripping, wasn't it?
Yes. And then so this is another picture of what's going on. These are just a few isolated cases.
Yeah. Well, I'm pretty sure we're right.
We got the fix before it gets worse, I think, probably.
Well, we got, we got quite, quite issues in there because what it is now is every time they get on top of that building to do work.
They create another problem.
They create another problem. And when we had the ice storm and they had been up there and look at that and on the backside, we did include one bit from, from Charlie Burner, we're doing roofing of approximately, we know you have to take bits on it, but that's just gonna give you an approximate idea of whether it will take to cover it up with, with, with metal instead of.
Oh, yeah, could it?
Yeah.
Could it?
Now, you need to get specs on that. This is just, Charles was just up on it and kind of guessed at it.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, that it can be handled either on the building across the street that I did, the, the print shop building.
Right.
That front, that front big urns is all laid. I had Erickson Steel do that and we put hats in there. And then we would turn them over and, and build up so that we could get the slump to go down.
Right.
And with, with that, I've been able to keep that part of the building absolutely dry.
Remember how much a square that cost you to have that done?
I think that was, at that time, and that was a long time ago, they, because Dad was still alive, and he's been on 20, 19 years.
I didn't realize, did he?
That I've had it that long. You know, it's, it's probably, I put that on after he died and it's probably been on about 18 years, 17, 18 years I haven't had it.
Well, it is what it is, but that now it's gonna be pretty close to probably what it is. I imagine, if, did he check, did he look underneath, Monty, to see, give me these pictures if there's anything that needs to be done under there?
I, you're gonna have to go back in and you're gonna have to find somebody better than Charles, not roofing gentleman, but somebody that can go in and repair structure up underneath.
That's what I was, that doesn't include that.
No, that does not.
That's why I was curious about that.
This is, this is the one that is, uh, this is the one that is most serious because it's, well, that's not.
If it's not sagging too much, they can go in though and nail, nail two of them.
Well, that's the one that's gonna get everybody because when that started, then we started getting divots in the roof and then, and then we got that going on.
There's gonna probably be some stuff when they demo.
I'm gonna say that you're looking at another 10 grand on top of that. And when was that bid, Monty?
It's dated here in his rent. You can take a look at it yourself.
I'm just curious.
You know, the price of wood, it's not gonna go down by the time we get it or?
Well, it's, it's pretty current. I mean, I don't think things are increasing too much right now.
Right, it's gotta slow down a little bit.
Yeah.
And with, with that being said, we've been arguing with, with, with our legislators over funding appeals. And when Murdoch started speaking, this came out and John knows about it because he's on the Board of Trustees for the Real, Rural Economic Action Plan, the REIT threat. And this was one of the last things that was spoke about by Murdoch in his board that he's doing all he can is the buildings come into some of the last community buildings, senior community buildings, courthouse, town halls, senior nutrition centers, meeting rooms for similar public facilities are, are included in the REIT legislation. And so there may be money that, that Shelley or whoever does it, the commissioners can get with, with John's guidance since he is supposedly, and you're one of the trustees, right?
Well, I'm on the, I'm on the executive board.
Okay. So you have guidance with this if you guys, you know, to get some of this taken care of and help the county.
They did say they were gonna have full REIT funding this year though, so.
Okay. That should, the biggest issue with that.
I don't, I don't know how that works with the city of Alva and.
Well, we own the building, so that's not, but, but the, the county ourselves can't apply for those REIT grants. But the senior citizen deal may be different. But here's the big problem, Monty, with that, is I think those grants, I don't think you can do the work prior to it and those grants, they take them in October, you apply for them and they award them in January.
Okay.
December, January. So we're looking at a year if, if we do that.
And I don't know if, if we've done it, I don't know if we can get reimbursed in that.
I don't think that you, they reimburse on those REIT grants. I think you have to wait till you get it.
Yes.
And then spend it then.
Well, I'm not sure that we can hold on that long.
That's what, I mean, I.
Here's a question. Is there, is there anything you could use that on if we took care of the roof and you applied for the REIT grant now and you received it, is there some updates you could do with that money at a later date?
I'm sure that there is.
I mean, that might be something to be thinking about.
Well, they'll have to meet the qualifications and that point system for what you need. It gets the bid.
Cause this needs fixed.
Yes.
I don't think we can wait on the grant or anything. I think we need to act on it.
Right.
But if we act on this, maybe you guys can start thinking about what you could upgrade with your grant.
What we can do, John, is get the, get the stats for it and then start looking at what we can do. After, after we see what, what we can do with it, see if we can get enough stuff gathered together to come back and, and improve the county building better than it was.
Right.
And not have the county hung out just for this repair, but make it so that the, the county doesn't have to come in and do another repair or something.
That's what I'm thinking.
Can you, uh, here, here's the, the next thing. If we, I, I think we need to address this and then that would be down the road.
Yeah.
Right.
But can you come up with somebody that you trust or whatever? And they don't, they can bid, but to come in and give you specs of, of how it's gonna be, need to be structurally fixed and maybe get a little more slope. See, I could see the ceiling joists up there if, if you'd scab on to the sides of them and raise that north end up to make it slope to the south.
Well, see, and that's why I brought up the subsequent to hats is probably, probably two of the best people that would be around would be Normal and R and R.
Right.
Or FM at Erickson and see what they can do about taking those hats because I've seen them with all the stuff that I own, I've seen them take the hat, which is with the hat side up and then they turn the hat side down and come up and then they put another, then they stagger, then they, they alternate them like that till they get the drop that you would want. And we don't wanna get it too fast because we got air conditioner setting up there and the weight of those. And, and we were all okay until they took, well, we weren't okay, but we didn't have the, near the issue until they changed the freezers out in that place and put the outdoor freezer that came from Woodward inside. And then we started having pains with it because they were up on the roof, monkeying with that thing because all of the stuff added more weight to the roof.
Getting bird crack and stuff.
And then, yeah. And then here we started again because when we have all that ice, we have.
Buckets everywhere in that building.
And I donated to them the ceiling tile because it was just coming down and hurts the doors and I had a pallet of it, so I just gave it to them.
Well, I, you just need to have somebody that you're comfortable with to spec.
Give us an idea of what we need.
And so everybody can bid the same thing.
Okay.
It's probably.
It's probably sooner than later because, you know, this is just, every day it gets wet and it's a little hotter.
Well, and the fact of the matter is she took my route today to go deliver because I go through the cap for her back and not many people like to do that. So I opted to come here and visit with you about it. So when she gets back in, I'll sit down with her and I'll get the board members together because they'll be there for dinner today and we'll discuss this. We'll discuss this right away and then I'll get back with, who do you want me to get back with, Shelley or one of you?
This gets back on the agenda. Or as far as I'm concerned, if you come up with the specs, if you could get somebody to write the specs that you're comfortable with.
That we want to put out for bids.
Yeah. Then we go out and you can just, Jennifer will go out for bids. Our purchasing agent.
And we'll get the ball rolling.
Yeah. But I like the idea of going with 10 or something. I mean, but I have to do something there.
Well, even when I do my houses, I do those with 10 so I don't have to.
If, if we go with 10, what's that gonna do though with your air conditioner stuff?
I don't know. And see, that's what, kind of what was the hinky in it because they can set it up on pedestals.
Yeah, they can set it up.
They'll have to, especially if you get a slope on it.
Yeah.
They'll have to level it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's another problem later down the road.
Just make sure they spec that in there when they.
Yeah, that needs to be part of it, the redo, you know.
Reach out to them.
Probably taking a different contractor to do that. You know, but have it a turnkey job, have them get the contractor to do it and all one thing.
You want one contractor and then you want them to get the stuff.
Yeah, let them take care of the rest of it.
That way you needn't fight for half of it.
Keep it simple as possible.
We deal with one guy.
That way he says, she says, don't happen.
And then you want somebody that, and in the, in the S, you want them to look at, at the deterioration on that?
Yeah, you want, and it wants, that's gotta be fixed before you put a good roof over it or a good roof structure either.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'll be sagging and then we'll have to.
And you're back, Robert.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we need to fix the whole problem while we're fixing it.
I got all my notes that I need to take back to her. I will, I will get everybody grounded up and I will get back or have either get back to Shelley and get it back on the agenda so that we can bring it, bring it forward.
Just we're getting it set up, go out for bids on it. Maybe we can get it quick now before the winter gets here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I would hope because if we have another one like last year, we'll have more problems and.
Well, one of these days, I don't know when, but one of these days we're gonna get snow to place up there and just.
I know.
Snow down through.
Well, we'll deal with that church. We got a problem with it.
Yeah, but the time's coming and that, that snow will be here. We haven't had one for a long time, but it's just covered everything else.
I do believe that. Thank you, Shelley. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
We're gonna want him.
I will report back to Eva and, and the board and let them know what your thoughts are.
Aye. Tell them all thanks for what they do over there.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, no action on that. As far as a motion.
Right.
All right, I guess we could have a motion that we get ready to go out for bids, but we do like.
What do you want?
Uh, number nine, discussion of possible action regarding appointments of the Haymarket Rail Park Authority Board members. And that is Todd Holder, Bob Furth, Alan Poe, Stan Bixler, and Ed Sutter.
They're all up?
No, I, I think it's just a yearly deal we have to do.
Right, that we just go.
Oh, the term ends, some of them, there's nobody's term ends this year. Todd Holder and Bob Furth are July 1st, 22, Alan Poe, July 1st, 23, and Stan and Ed, July 1st, 24.
Right, and I think it's Stan and Ed that were up this year, so this puts them back in, cause they're a three-year term.
Okay. So we just make a motion to keep the same people on there?
And as is, yeah. Unless you got somebody else that.
No, no, I, I don't know of anybody interested in that.
Okay.
Other than them. That's, that's my motion.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, I mean, we, I don't want to want it, wouldn't it?
Of course I know.
Yeah, I ain't very indifferent.
Okay, discussion of possible action regarding appointments of Woods County Industrial Development Authority Board members. Okay, Stan Clyde to August 22, Connor Martin to August of 23, Melissa Fisher to August of 24, Rick Cunningham to August of 25, and myself, Randy McMurphy to August of 26. Do one of you guys wanna serve?
I'm good. I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Murphy.
Well.
I trade in it, but I don't wanna. I move, I move we approve all of those.
Yeah, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just at one class, sir?
Yes.
Okay, number 11, discussion of possible action regarding the contract with Tulsa County Jew Hall Bureau and Detention Home at the amount of a daily rate of $68.25.
I believe we accept that.
It's the same as last year. They didn't go up.
There's several of them that we gotta do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, those keep coming in.
Okay, number 12, it's discussion of possible action regarding the creation of a new subaccount within the donation fund for the court clerk, number 1235-1-1400-2005. And the donation made to the court clerk from Oklahoma Bar Foundation in the amount of $3,000. For what I know about it, I'm good with it. I make the motion, we approve it.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye. Doesn't sound good, huh?
Yeah.
Number 13, discussion of possible action regarding bid number 2021 of seven, six-month bids. Well, I mean, I'm kinda limited to, uh, machine for hire. It looks like the, the trucking deal. Only two bids.
For the trucking?
Yeah, for the belly dump anyway. And Litzberge that, Smith and, and Litzberge.
No shooters?
No.
Did he even bid on the water?
No, but hit me a single source.
That's fine.
I mean, as far as I know, I don't know anybody else that, that hauls that and, and will spread, you know, will apply it.
He should be done with mine any day. He's got about four or five miles left to do, but that won't mess me up, right?
No, like I say, I don't, I don't know anybody else that, that does that.
Looks like Deb Ross's really became a single force on a lot of it.
He might follow them anyway.
Well, I just hope that.
They just couldn't get close, couldn't they?
Boy, there's a big difference in that circle S and Cummins, isn't there? $55 versus $82?
Yeah. Who, circle S, 55?
Yeah. Oh, there's.
Hot mix.
Same price on all of it, you know? That Deb Ross pretty much, B and H paid me.
Never paid.
They paid it back on her? Is that, is that, uh, that's B and H, that's, uh?
Yeah, Hess.
What's this Zephyr LLC?
I don't know, but.
That's still B and H, right? He just paid.
No, no, Zephyr is another outfit. She is 27,000 or what, 25,000?
For three mile.
Per, oh.
You gotta have three mile.
Per project.
Zephyr is minimum three mile. But what's that 25,700 for?
Well.
For three mile or?
I don't think so. I think that's per mile. I mean, I, there is any question there. It's only 12,000 for three mile for Hess. You follow what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, I don't.
I, I'm pretty certain that that Zephyr bid, haul the rock, hauling the rock and, and buying the oil and.
Everything from Goody Bowl.
Yeah. But still.
That's just you pay them and they take out the oil, the labor and everything.
Or I'm guessing, I, I hope, but I mean, I think we can do it for under 20 with us doing ours the way we do it and so it's still high.
Yeah.
You know?
About 10 grand, I think.
Yeah.
But, oh, well, that's your problem.
But that, that may be the only way they'll do it is to do the entire job.
Right.
You got the oil.
Hot oil?
Hot oil. Depends on what you wanna use.
Yeah.
Well, a bunch of that stuff we don't ever use. And then the conical's.
That's a.
Her mom got it. That anionic, is that what we use, that 224?
Yeah.
You gotta take a bunch of that off and just put on what you guys do use next time. Make it easier.
CRS tube chip seal.
We got the two plus. Did.
Um, bright asphalt. Want the people, CRS tools.
Why the hell they have it?
I don't know.
I'm gonna see. Axle's pretty cheap one. They got the bolt seal.
I don't know where they're out of.
They're hungry because they're bidding on stuff anyway. Where do they have them, John, do you know? Beats the heck out of me. This CRS 2P chip and seal, is that that scrub seal stuff? That broom seal?
I don't know the difference.
Uh, it, it possibly could be, John, but I don't know that for sure. But nobody else has. So I guess it probably does. Some of these I don't even know what they are.
Yeah.
MS3, AEP. Anionic, that's what we use and that's it. Or that rubberized anionic. We just use CRS 2P anionic, right? Yep. I'm in my commissioner's meeting. What do you need? Oh, we're just looking at six-month bids. Uh, what do you need? No. Not at Larry's pit. But I can, I work across the road. There's some sand over there. It's not Larry's though, but, but you can have it. It's a dollar store sand. I didn't give it away. But, uh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It'd be just right what you need. But my loader's right there and everything. That would work out a lot better than having to go. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, I don't see anything. Except I take a little bit.
Okay, see, I-
You said you're on this truck.
Well-
Okay.
I mean, you've got it listed on the hot mix that in some place-
I mean, it's all.
But underneath it, it specifies that someplace that sometimes, that it's on that bid that the distance may, may-
Make the difference?
Yeah. Cause it's mainly, it, it's pretty hard to go all the way to Clinton and get back there and that stuff's gonna be hot enough to use.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Shit, Tom. Well, a little tired or had to go, what do you do? You don't get along the road. More thousands.
You can't let it set up in your trailer. I mean, you can pull it over on a county road and get rid of it. I mean, but that's what you, we gotta, you know, I, I think he probably
will let that be because it's so far away.
Well, it says it right on there. It, it has it right under it though, that the, the distance is, has a bearing. But, so, John, these two trucking offenses into your district, which, which one are you gonna use?
Either one.
I think we gotta pick. On that, it's the only one.
Pick one or the other?
Yeah. I mean, if you're-
I'll pick Jim.
Okay, then I'll use Littenburg and David, you're?
I'll go with Smith.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I, I'll just use Jim.
Okay. Well, that's I miss the motive.
Okay, so on that last page, so you're gonna go-
D2 with Littenburg and D1 and 3 with Smith.
If it's busy, I'll call Littenburg, right?
Yeah.
We do that.
Yeah, if they're not available, then so, no.
Okay, and then on the others, it, it's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I'm just gonna use low bids. Because like on that stuff between Sunbelt and Railroad Yard and all them.
It depends on what you get.
And oil, use a little bit.
I mean, the auditor wants to pick up here and pick everything I wanna use, but I don't know what I'm gonna use. That's why I need to use it. Well, the steel deal, from my understanding- I'm gonna pick the lowest and the cheapest bid. On the steel deal, it's gonna be whoever has it, cause it's- Right, that's what I mean. If I say, well, I'll use all Railroad Yard, then I end up having to do Sunbelt and- Yeah, cause it's gonna be, it's getting harder to get.
Low bidder available. I mean, that's really a tough deal because just like Doug Ross sent us letters last time and he didn't honor the damn bid.
But he's the only one.
Right. Lowest best availability.
So.
Lowest best availability about, about how it needs to be. If we were down there by the city, we'd have a big thick thing to pick from, but we're kinda out here at the edge of no man's land, so.
Okay. Discussion of possible action regarding bid number 202108, annual, annual ballot bids.
Okay, so Sanders call?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're good. I guess we didn't make a motion to look, but we did on that. You, you understood what the judge was gonna make.
Okay, so who, who made that motion?
I'll make it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now onto the ballot bid.
Just on record. And then I'll pick the right one.
Oh, in one bid or this is in one cheap bid?
Yeah, there was, um, more bids, um, Midwest training and bid and her, but are royal. But her choice is royal. They've always delivered the ballots to her and she likes that. She doesn't have to worry about it.
Okay.
So she chose to pick them. And their pricing, I think it's pretty close to the same as Midwest training.
Some things there Midwest is a nickel higher on and some places royal is. So it kinda equals out.
Kinda equals out, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
35, 45.
So.
Okay.
Now, the eight by 17s is the only thing that's really different. That's the one she wants, a royal?
A royal.
Is that what we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. We-
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Need new business?
New brand. New brand, uh, about a inch in Monoka.
That's what I, I got.
About right.
I got two half-inch ones.
We got about an inch for it. We got seven tenths and about a half inch. We probably got a little over a, a hitch.
Okay.
Got the grass green still?
Yeah, it was needed.
Yeah.
Number 16, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right.
Signed out.